August, what is it, the 6th? August 6th, meeting of the Wabash County Council at 7:05. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're pleased to begin this evening's meeting with presentation from Mr. Tim Penny, who's here from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks for putting it on top of the agenda. I assume you have lots of important stuff on the agenda, so don't intend to take a lot of time, but we do appreciate the opportunity to give communities across our 20 county region an update on the work of our foundation here in Southern Minnesota. As you know from my past experience, or my past presentations here, our foundation serves a 20 county region in south central southeastern Minnesota. We are described best as a community and economic development fund. We invest in three categories of work. We do some entrepreneurial work across the region, 25 to 30 small business startup, early-stage business loans. We were involved with that fisheries here in town not too many years ago. Tough situation, but those are the situations we often come in on to be a gap funder to help a project go forward that we hope succeeds and creates jobs for communities. We also have a prosperity initiative where every year we recruit about 15 new immigrant entrepreneurs to help them get started in the business sector and to grow their businesses here in southern Minnesota. And we also are investing a lot in local foods because there's tremendous growth potential for local foods in our part of the state in particular. And that culminates in a local foods feast festival that we help to host and organize at the Rochester Civic Center. The first Saturday every December, we get like 1,600 people to come to that. Forty, 50 institutional buyers come and about 100 exhibitors are there. Southern Minnesota local food producers and processors. We also invest heavily in early childhood, so every year we give away early childhood grants. The ECFEs from school districts around the area often apply for that. We distribute about 25,000 early reader books to groups and organizations. So every spring, watch for the applications for that program. And then last but not least, we do a lot of early childhood provider trainings. And we did one here in Wabash County last November for early childhood providers to help them up their game, to be the best they can be, to get these kids ready for kindergarten. Last, we invest in community funds. We've helped 29 communities in southern Minnesota create community funds so they can garner tax-detectable donations to invest in important projects for their community. We also hope that they will build endowment funds so that they have perpetual dollars to do that. And we will also accept farmland as a donation to these communities, help manage that land, keep it in production after taxes and expenses, allow those proceeds to become part of the community fund budget. And Wabash-Keelog is one of those community funds. And you've used our resources in a variety of ways, including, I think, about, I'm adding it up, about $30,000 of matching funds that we have provided for some of the grants that your community fund has made for projects that are important to your town. So that's kind of who we are and what we do across southern Minnesota. And we do appreciate the fact that a number of cities and every one of the 20 counties in our region do provide some annual support for us. That local support comprises about 10% of our $5 million annual budget, but it's an important contribution to our success because, in our view, it represents a partnership that we have with local units of government here to supplement and complement what you're doing to try to grow the prosperity of this region. So with that, I don't need to take more of your time, but I do appreciate the opportunity to give you this update.
Thank you. Can I just pose a question to you? Since you know Wabash well and Smith knows Wabash well, are you, is there anything in particular that you think this community should be responsive to with regards to opportunities that maybe get overlooked or are not taken advantage of to the fullest?
Well, that's a good one. I mentioned this local foods arena, and I think almost every community in our region could be more mindful about how they support and celebrate the local foods entrepreneurs in their vicinity. And most of you are doing farmers markets, things of that sort, but there may be other ways that you could provide some support to that sector as it continues to grow in our region. I would say, what I would like to see more of is Wabash or Wabash-Keelog District taking greater advantage of the early childhood resources we have because every January, we offer grants to community groups and organizations, including ECFE at the schools, to invest in new innovative approaches to dealing with the quality early childhood in their area. Those kids are our future, and if they don't come to kindergarten on a par with their classmates, they often don't catch up. So whether it's our books or our annual grant program in the winter months, please look for that. The third thing I would suggest is you don't run the community fund, but I appreciate what your local community fund has done because we will match grants if they are made for something that invests in children or invests in entrepreneurs. So think about our resources as matching grants for what your local community fund is doing in those two categories of work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very helpful. Any other questions? Appreciate you coming.
If you don't mind, I'm going to head home to Otona.
Absolutely, that's why you're at the top of the hour. Thanks for doing this. Now we have a time for public comment. If you'd like to make comment to council, we welcome you to come to the podium and just state your name and address for the record. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, none tonight? That's all right, we have lots to discuss. As far as changes or additions to the agenda, I have an agenda item to add regarding 137 Pembroke and the status of that property. I think Craig, you had something you wanted to?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. One was, I wanted to add something on the no-wake zone in the Mississippi River. And also, I want to talk a little, I'd like to take the first reading of the city code out of the consent agenda.
You concerned about time to digest the materials?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair. We can certainly do that. We can also, as far as I understand, have the first reading and then get the full time before the second reading, so we could, you know, maybe you'll change your take on this. I just talked to Mike before he left. We don't need him related to another item that's going to be removed from the agenda. But he said we could take up till October if we'd like, before that second reading, because this is a lot, obviously, to go through. Yeah. So would you like to still see it removed, even if we have that period before the second reading?
That should come under changes or addition, or that should come under consent once we get to consent.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, it's under consent, so, well, are we going to have the second reading in October? Then I guess that's what I'm wondering about. So maybe we should remove it just so we can just clear that up. Take it out of consent and put it on.
September for a second reading, October?
Or put it on, well, we can discuss it under general business.
10.8.
General Business, 10.6.
It'd be 10.8.
10.8.
We've got two before that. So the property at 137 Pembroke is 10.6?
No-wake zone?
Nope, 10.7.
It'll go fast.
And discussion of code change, 10.8. Okay. All right, any further changes?
We need to remove 9.1.
Okay.
Chief Stark has alerted us that that property has been cleaned to his satisfaction, so he will stay on that.
Okay.
And I need to add this under the warrants. I need to add two bills.
All right.
One will be a payment for the Wabash Riverfront Revitalization Project, a payment of $25,089. It goes to the project managers that then dole it out to the others. And the second is a few bills to AED Superstore for the purchase of some AEDs. Shocking.
Defibrillators.
Defibrillators, there you go.
Defibrillators for ambulance service?
One of them is for, two of them, for a total cost of $24.90. That is going to be passed through from Keelog. Keelog was paying for them. We were able to negotiate a better price. And we were trying to have all of the same defibrillators out in the community that are ambulances, and I think our police carry a few of them. We want to have all the same technology out there. So Gene worked with these organizations to get a good pricing and then get the same ones we're used to. Great River Homes is giving us the money for the second purchase, which is for 12 of them, for a total of $12,936. And they're giving us a donation for that. And then the third one is for the training unit, for the Training Center of the Ambulance, which will come out of the ambulance budget for $682.20. So it's three of them, one for $24.90, one for $12,936.10, and a third for $682.20.
All for AEDs?
All AEDs.
Any questions about those bills? Any questions about the Riverfront Revitalization Bill? That's the, Chad Best explains it, but the... Do you want to say anything about that, about that, so that we keep up with that?
Yeah, this is basically coming from the $150,000 that the city approved to front for the first pre-designed portion of the project. I think we're hopefully honing in on a final design, which will then yield the grant documents with this, will then allow us to draw on that 150 and be reimbursed for those expenses that were agreed upon back in the January meeting. And we use the project manager kind of, the money all comes into them and then they dole it out to the subcontractors to make the payments. You'll see a couple other, I think, Payment 1 and 2 are in the warrants as well.
Okay, so, we have, in summary, three items added to general business. We have these, two additional bill, two additional items that are bills that are added to the warrants. We'd remove the, from the consent agenda, remove the first reading of city code, which leaves us with the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 120, which is new ordinance language. Our city attorney's recommendation was to keep that with the city code, track it with the city code changes. So then we'd be, we need to move that also.
That'd be 10.9. Someone needs to approve all these changes.
Right. So do we have clarity on the changes? It's a lot.
I move, we approve it.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion from Councilman Wallerick, second from Councilman Woodley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, that's a lot to kind of orchestrate, but, all right. So it's been a while since I wasn't able to be at the July meeting, so I've been sort of capturing some thoughts since June. It's been a really wonderful summer. It's also been a hot, difficult summer for everybody dealing with a long wind cold spring and then a hot summer. And there's been some tragedy. I really want to appreciate the local law enforcement effort who assisted with recovery of the individual who drowned. That's very devastating for everybody and certainly for that individual's family. We really appreciate service to our community. And we thank everybody who made the celebratory and successful Riverboat Days happen. It was a great event overall. There's a lot of effort that goes into that. Very nice to see Ruby White celebrated as the grand marshal for decades of service to the community as a columnist. And probably selfishly, what we appreciate is excellent coverage of council meetings. Firefighter's Water Fight was very successful. Thanks to those volunteers for engaging the community that way. And again, law enforcement, anytime there's a celebration, it's a lot of additional effort for law enforcement. We, that doesn't go unrecognized. And all the community organizations and individuals who go out of their way to make that celebration happen. It's a lot on a lot of people's plates. It's extra from their everyday, regular responsibilities. I appreciate Jeff Sulla for chairing last council meeting. I'm sorry I missed it. There was a little bit of history, which I always appreciate, so thanks for doing that. And there was a bike share event, which was addressed in last council meeting that the bike share is up and running. And there was approval to account so that funds can be received, donations can be received. But there was also a really successful June 14 kickoff for that bike share. And already, they're nearly halfway to the goal, the annual goal of ridership. And so 55 users, as of several weeks ago, individual users had registered. That doesn't account for the potentially repeat rides. So that's very, very wonderful to have that additionally in our city. And then I attended the Southeast Minnesota League of Municipalities meeting on June 30 in Red Wing. There was an excellent discussion on regional tourism and thinking about regional tourism as a regional economy. And really encouraging, you know, from those who work in tourism all day, every day, from Rochester to all the small surrounding cities in the region, to not think about, you know, individually our offerings, but to think about regionally our offerings, and to not think about a strategy individually, but to think about a strategy regionally. And I thought it was important that they, those in the tourism sector understand that not only do small communities have a challenge in identifying their tourism brand, Minnesota itself, the region itself, has difficulty getting traction. And we have work to do there. And Minnesota itself, in the tourism economy, doesn't have the brand traction and the market share that other states do. So sometimes it's good to sort of step back and not hyper-focus on your own individual community's assets for a while and realize it's part of a bigger discussion. That was very productive and probably just the beginning of a bigger discussion. And then there was a really great mutual aid and equipment sharing agreement presentation. Hennepin County, some communities within Hennepin County have developed some agreements to address sort of the liability associated with mutual aid as well as equipment sharing. And it stands as an example. There's a lot of interest from the league for exploring some policy work on that and actually exploring whether there's a model that would work for southern Minnesota communities. So that, that's an update from that league that represents us. And then I know it was announced last month, but it probably seemed like a long way. And now it's much closer at hand. The National Eagle Center will have a community event that's free. Everybody's encouraged to come. It's called Soaring Higher Together. And it's August 18 from 1 to 4. It'd be great to see everybody there. And they're going to close Big Joe Alley to have events there as well as in the open space adjacent to the Eagle Center. It'll celebrate 30 years of inspiration in the future of an expanded National Eagle Center in Wabash. There'll be live music with the Sheldon Brass Band, a live eagle program, kids' activities, food, farmers market, and cultural entertainment. So it'll be great. That is the last day of summer if you have kids in school in the Wabash-Keelog District. So after you get your clothes laid out and everybody's school bags are packed, come to the event. And that's all from me for today. And committee reports in Wabash, good news, I feel like I started on this side. I'll start over here. Brian, anything from utilities?
Utilities, nothing worth mentioning at all. Two things I did, I just want to talk about real briefly, is the group that puts together the fireworks invited me to help this year. So I helped light off fireworks, which was quite an experience. Super professionally run by those guys. There's no messing around when there's that much firepower and that much fire to light it up. So aside from the 12 minutes that it takes, they devote their entire 4th of July to that. So it's an all-day and all-night venture, so just thank them for putting the time in there. And then I also went to the Fireman's Annual Picnic, which was just fun.
Good.
And it's good to hang out with all those guys and thank them for what they do.
Wonderful. Great, great. So then, next would be, Tim, anything from planning?
Planning did not meet in July. Our next meeting will be August 13. So we'll have one for sure then.
All right. And John is absent tonight. Anything Chad or Craig from Port Authority?
Yeah, we did meet last, the 20...
It was a delayed meeting, yeah?
Yeah, it was a delayed meeting. And we'll be meeting on August 20 again. And we're working on some of our, trying to develop a plan for development, exactly what types of businesses and ventures that we want to see in Wabash. And that's been going on for the last couple of meetings, but it's, we're encouraging any kind of input that people can give to the commissioners or to the council on that.
And we did have a meeting today, we were supposed to have a meeting today with John and Mike from the paper to get a good article going, but John had to be up to his cabin this morning. So we had to push that out a little bit.
So look for more in the Herald. Anybody else, we don't have either, are there any other committee reports? Go to Tony for Parks?
Parks and Streets.
Evening, everyone. Street Department, or Street Commission met this morning. We talked about some BCI Flex Patch, some road patch for cracks that are too big for regular crack fillers. It's sort of the wider black patch that you probably see improves the ride and seals up the cracks. And then we talked about the Fitzgerald Platte and the street vacation. There's a couple little sections of street that are pretty much unusable in a section of the land that the Fitzgerald family is kind of starting to divide up. So we looked at vacating those two little oddball going-nowhere streets and then working on some future roads with them that are in the River Drive area. And then I gave them an update on the Mill and Overlay Project. And then we talked about some Skyline Drive drainage issues. And that's it for Streets. And then Park Board met last month, and we talked about the Bird City Program. And they have, I think we had like three meetings on that, Craig, about...
At least two, yeah. Yeah, three, yeah.
Started out, yeah, we'd had three meetings and kind of talking about that whole program. And then that's going to be, they approved that, and that's going to be passed on to the city council for that. Vets Park got a new statue. So if you drive by, you can take a look at that. That was donated by the VFW and Legion Club for about $4,500 bucks. And we talked about the donkey ball. That was kind of something new to Riverboat Days and new in our park, so we kind of made sure that nothing was going to get damaged. They were going to clean up good after the donkeys and just make sure everything was covered. And I think it went well, and so that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Anything from ambulance, Gene?
Evening, council, mayor. I'll start with the invoices that Chad was talking about, the warrants, real quick. I just want to touch base on those. I want to give Ed Greiner, the Assistant Director, the credit. He can't be here tonight because he was doing the National Night Out, so he took that. But he's the one that went in and negotiated these prices for this. What it is, is Great River Homes approached us and was asking us if we would assist in buying them the AEDs for their homes here and in Lake City. And so we said that we would put something together. And she applied for, I don't remember where the grant was through, but she, Chris, actually, got awarded the grant, and we went through with getting the stuff ordered and stuff like that. So it's going to be a huge asset in this town because not only is there going to be AEDs in every one of these homes, but we also will have them registered with the state. So the state actually has an app out there for every AED that is registered. So if you are in, say, in Wabash and you have this app, you can actually go on there and it will tell you exactly where that AED is at. So we're increasing those quite a bit. And then the Keelog First Responders, they've got a bunch of old equipment and they had money to, in their fund, to purchase two new ones. And then we got such a good deal, we added to our training, two more to our training because we actually needed them. The ones that we had were pretty old. So that's where, that's kind of the backstory behind that. We're looking to have these, next week, there should be a press release, hopefully, with that. Chris and I are currently working on a press release, joint press release for these. And, because she has to have it to fulfill her grant satisfac, you know, her satisfaction for grant. So, sorry. But other than that, you know, just looking at my notes, sorry. And so Ed just got back from St. Paul. He spent two days last week up there, Thursday and Friday. I will be doing mine next year. We actually went through a DOT training course where we can teach EMT and EMR classes now. We have a class, hopefully, that's coming up this fall. I have six interests, six people interested already, so we're looking to expand that. We'll get the word out there and start teaching again so we can get our staff increased that much more. Just runs right now, we're at 309 calls for our service this year so far, with 267 transports. Last year at this time, we were at 300. So we are down 33 transports right now. It is a little bit slower this summer. I think the weather has a lot to do with it, so, but other than that, guess have any questions?
Thank you, Gene.
Thanks, Gene.
Darren, anything from fire you'd like to update council?
Oh, good.
Good. Did I miss anybody? All right. I will have our administrator's report from Chad.
We'll go through a few things here. Some updates on the Corps. I've always, since, committed to giving some updates on that. The city sent a lengthy response to the Corps about a month ago to reiterate the city's stance on our proposal that was submitted about a year ago now with the utilization of the port and working with the private contractor to remove sand from the islands. We have since had significant dialogue with the Corps on that response. And hopefully, we can share something very soon jointly with the Corps on where that is leading. So the mayor and I were lucky enough to meet the new Colonel. Colonel Jansen came down, spent half hour with us, very nice, cordial. He made the comment win-win several times. So he definitely understands the fight that we're putting up and the predicament that we're in.
When is their draft plan going to come out?
I believe the end of September or the end of October is the two dates that they gave us. Yeah.
It had a due date of September 30. Now they think it may have a month.
Might have a month slip.
Setback.
Yep. We hope to have some communication before that, most certainly, on where that's at. Been, you know, keeping a pulse on the street project. Tony and Pat and those guys and Dylan have been out there helping with Brian and haven't heard of any major hiccups. Things have been going pretty smooth. I think it'll be a couple of weeks yet before we get any blacktop down. If that's correct, right? They want to do it all at once, and they've got timing with all the other stuff. It's the same contractor doing all the projects around here. So continue to be careful out at the intersections with all the cones. They've got one reduced conflict intersection done. And when are they, do you know when they're going to have the Dairy Queen one done, Brian? Not yet, okay. I know that they're working on the Bruger Valley intersection as well. That's getting close, so keep an eye on that stuff. I represent the city in the chamber with FLW League Worldwide, hosted two tournaments here, July 19th and 20th, I believe, were the two dates. There was a college qualifier, of which there was 105 teams that fished in that. That was a one-day event. A lot of them had been there. That was a Friday event. A lot of them had been there from the previous Monday or even the weekend. I made a point to ask a couple of businesses, mainly BP and QuickTrip, and they were, BP was busy all week with those boats filling up gas, getting breakfast sandwiches, stuff to take out in the boats, that type of stuff. QuickTrip said the same thing. They weren't even prepared for Friday morning with 105 coming into town. They were swamped, from what I understand. So they were very successful. Sunday, Saturday was a local high school event. I shouldn't say local, there were some teams from Texas there that travel all summer, so... But we had some good local showing from some local kids in that one. But overall, it was a good event. I'm trying to convince him to bring one back next year. He wants to go down to Prairie de Sheen, but we'll see what we can do. Obviously, businesses, if you feel that's a benefit, share that with your council member and with the chamber, please, because they, it isn't free to bring them here. I think this event, for the two of them, costs $3,000, and that was through the chamber. And you get all of the publicity, the articles that were in the paper. Those are all on the internet, what have you. So a lot of stuff going on as far as that goes. That's good.
All right. Thank you, Chad. So we have our consent agenda. Again, we'll approve our July 2 regular minutes of council meeting, the warrants with these additions, request to assess repair costs. Lost track what that one is. An on-sale liquor license for the St. Felix's Fall Festival, a resolution approving high-speed rail commission's amendment to joint powers agreement. The fire truck bids, because we're removing first readings on these other ordinance issues, the fire truck bid, certification to taxes, and the city hall cleaning contract renewal with Wabash County DAC. Oh, it's utility repairs. Okay, thank you. Sorry, just slipped my mind. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified? We have a motion?
Aye.
We have a motion from Councilman Falcom, second from Councilman Moyer. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We have the consent agenda passed. So we've removed our public hearing on the alleged city code violation that's been addressed since the agenda was posted. So for general business, we have the general obligation improvement note. So for general business, we have the general obligation improvement note for the twenty-nineteenth street improvement project.
Mr. Babani is present. Mr. Babani serves in the capacity as a financial advisor to the city. Um, he's worked with us over the last several, uh, years, uh, in bond offerings as well. And, uh, at the last budget, or at the last retreat, there was a small discussion about looking to borrow, uh, a portion of the two thousand and nineteen street project. So, Mr. Babani prepared, uh, prepared all the documentation. And what he's looking at, we have about one point two million in costs for the, for the general fund part of the street project. And we are looking at financing five hundred thousand of that through this program. And that would yield a payment approximately, not a payment, but we would levy approximately forty thousand dollars a year to make that debt payment for ten years, no?
Ten years.
Ten years, ten years, yes. So I'll turn it over to you. There's got to be a lot more than that to it.
Well, you, you did hit a lot of the high points. Um, many years ago, the city had hired me, uh, to help them with some capital financial planning. Um, you know, the big catalyst of that, if you recall, is that two thousand and thirteen large road project. Since that time, um, I don't know if it's been annual, but it's been almost annual. I've been asked to come back and, um, it's a computer model. We put it up on the wall. I've been asked to come back and update that for additional projects and so forth. Staff has done a very nice job, um, of also projecting not just projects that you'd issue bonds for, but also projects that you intend to pay cash for out of your capital projects fund. So with that sort of nation, um, a month or so ago, I was here with the Public Utilities Commission. Um, I know a couple of council members were there. We put this model on the wall and we had fully intended to pay cash for the entirety of your project this year. Um, the sources of funds were going to be sewer fund money, um, capital project money, some grant money and so forth. But because of all the future projected purchases out of your capital project fund, the capital project fund couldn't throw quite enough money at it to be all cash. So we went to the commission and to the, to the couple of council members who were at the meeting, uh, with the idea that we would draw the balance roughly half a million out of the general fund. Well, that led to a discussion on, you know, what's the proper reserve to keep in the general fund? And the thought came out of the meeting from, uh, the members present that they'd like to, um, consider a small borrowing. So five hundred dollars to you and I personally sounds like a hell of a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of municipal finance, it's not. Um, so when a city needs a smaller amount like that, uh, as well as the fact that you would term it over a short period, like ten years, issuance costs become sort of more of a factor than some of the other things you would take into account. So what would be a, sort of a low-cost way to place five hundred thousand dollars over ten years, that has flexible prepayment options, um, and can be done fairly quickly and, and without a lot of burden? And so I had suggested, uh, it's a direct bank placement, this bond issue, but it's run through Minnesota Rural Water Associations, uh, what they call their MIDI Loan Program. A full disclosure, David Drown Associates, a firm I work for, um, we act as municipal advisor to Minnesota Rural Water. And so we help run those programs and am the guy who processes all of the applications that come in from all over the state. So I'm, I've got a real good knowledge to it. But this program allows you to issue this debt quickly. There was a application the city submits. It takes five to ten minutes to fill out. We were able to turn around a locked-in proposal. It's in your packets. It's not a projection. It's an actual proposal that you can accept or reject, um, and if you choose to reject it, there's no cost. But it's a program that you can access quickly and the way it's priced is, what we do is we look at rated bond sales in the open market. What other cities might be getting, if they went through a standard and porous credit rating, did a competitive sale, what would the open market provide them? Now granted, those bonds would be issued with much, much higher issuance costs. To give you an idea, just to get the rating would be an additional ten thousand dollars in, in issuance cost. Plus you'd have a third party, an underwriter, who would purchase the bonds and for the purpose of resale and make profit. There'd probably be another several thousand dollars in that. So, um, despite the fact that an open market sale might yield a lower interest rate because of those higher costs, you, you know, you borrow more money because of the higher issuance cost, this program is designed to give you payments that are pretty much the same, but without the rigmarole, without the headache. Um, so that's why it felt like a good fit for this small ten-year, um, bond issue. You can go to your packets if you like, Chad is correct, the annual tax levy is scheduled at just under forty thousand dollars a year. Recognize that number is somewhat inflated. Uh, Minnesota law requires whenever you issue a general obligation bond that you have sufficient revenue to not only make the payment, but to cover a hypothetical five percent extra. And the reason they do that is because, come up, that'll, that can play with your cash flow. So for instance, um, roughly a hundred and ninety thousand dollars is being assessed to adjacent property owners over that time. And those property owners will be paying principal and interest over that ten-year period. Um, the interest rate, I think, was set at three seventy-five. Now imagine if a bunch of people were to prepay their assessments. You're not earning three point seven five percent on your investment. So if we had a bunch of prepaid's, we'd have a bunch of cash earning very little in interest. So long-term, that could have an impact on our cash flow. That's the reason for that extra five percent that the state wants you to plan for us for things like that. It, it may or may not work out perfectly, um, but that's the intent, is to help cover fluctuations in your revenue stream. Another nice thing about the MIDI loan compared to a conventional open market bond sale is if we did an open market bond sale, in order to get people in purchasing your bonds, you'd have to promise not to prepay those bonds for probably seven or eight years at least. And the reason being is the folks that are purchasing your bonds are doing all this research into Wabashaw. If they agree to buy the bonds, they don't want you to pay them off next week. They want to make sure that investment's going to stand good for a period of time. So you could set your prepayment date earlier, but if you do that, they're going to jack the rate on you. Um, with the Minnesota Rural Water MIDI Loan Program, um, you have to wait at least twelve months, but after the first twelve months, you can pay, prepay in whole or in part, um, on payment dates, which roll around every six months. There is a one percent prepayment penalty on any prepayments prior to February first of two thousand and twenty-seven. And that may sound onerous, except for the fact that if this was an open market sale, you wouldn't be able to prepay at all, uh, during that time, okay? Um, so that prepayment penalty is basically to protect the, the bank from some risk is all. Um, after February first of two thousand and twenty-seven, you can pay in whole or in part at, you know, on those payment dates without penalty. So, um, that, in that way, it would mirror a conventional sale. All right, why don't I stop there and, and see where questions might lead us?
I'll just clarify one, sorry. There was a full council.
Oh, full council was there?
Yeah, it was not a utility meeting.
Oh, it was a work session?
Yes.
I came to two meetings, didn't I? I did.
So this notice from the First Independent Bank of Russell, Minnesota?
Yes.
Who are they and where are they?
They're in Russell, Minnesota, which is western Minnesota. Minnesota Rural Water has a relationship with four banks. Um, the micro loan program, which we're not doing here, um, their selected banks are Pine Island Bank and Bank of Zambrota. And they've been, had a relationship with them for years, long time. They've also have, on the MIDI program and the mega program, their relationship is with the First Independent Bank of Russell, Minnesota, and also Northview Bank of Finlessen, Minnesota. Don't ask me why they were selected. But they've been working with them for years. And I, and I say, don't ask me why they were selected, not because I don't want to tell you, it's because I don't know, just to, just to be clear.
I'm curious, that's the, this blocks from my middle school, so I know right where it is. I don't know why either.
Oh gosh, you wouldn't know the name Tom Kerber, would you?
Not.
Okay.
Familiar to me. It's been a while.
Um, if the council decides to move forward, there is a resolution, actually, there's two resolutions in your packet. One of them, uh, authorizes the sale of these bonds and, um, the other one is called a reimbursement resolution. That was a resolution I had sent earlier and is in fact not necessary. Um, what we were concerned with, or what I was concerned with is if we had paid all cash for this project and then we got into next year and you decided that was a bad idea and you'd like to go back and issue bonds later, that reimbursement resolution would have been necessary to give you that flexibility. Um, but since council at that meeting said, let's go ahead and do it this year, then the reimbursement resolution really is not necessary. The only resolution you should consider tonight is the one that authorizes the sale of the bonds if you're happy with the proposal.
Anybody have any question about that resolution language? Or holdover questions from the prayer discussion?
What, what does the resolution say or is it this one that's in the, on our back?
First one, yeah. On paper, is yours slow?
That's what we don't need.
I think it's like the first page, isn't it?
Resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement of bond is the one we don't need.
Correct.
Yep, it's like the second page of our document.
Really, if we adopt the resolution plain and simply, we're agreeing to borrow the five hundred thousand to subject.
And, and if you do so, um, what will happen is on August twentieth will be the closing date. Um, there's no physical closing like a real estate transaction where you all have to meet in a lawyer's office. It'll all be handled through the postal mail and email. Um, so our staff will work with your staff to get that done. But it does take a couple of weeks to gather all the documents and signatures and whatnot.
If you remember from the presentation too, our debt ratios were significantly low for communities of our size. Our tax rate was low.
You're in good shape.
Communities of our size. Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, take out this bond.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have, uh, council member, uh, Falcom, I want to just say Councilmember Craig, since that's what I call him, uh, has made a motion and, and Councilmember Walrake has seconded. Do we have any discussion? Will it take a vote? All in favor? Did you want to roll on this kind of a decision?
Why don't we roll it?
Okay, we'll have a vote by roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Walrake?
Yep.
Falcom?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. So we have our resolution.
Thank you for your time tonight. Um, just recognize, we, we try not to be transaction-oriented as a company. So, um, if you think of anything, like you want to discuss whether it be in relation to this or anything municipal finance related, Chad knows how to get ahold of me if you ever have questions, so, all right, thank you.
Thanks for your time, really appreciate it. All right, so now we have before us, uh, the Wabashaw twenty nineteen street assessment waiver request, uh, from the county. Brian Beeman, the Wabashaw County, welcome.
I can give a little history upfront, yeah, if you don't mind. And Brian Malm stepped in if, if I need you, but, um, we went back to two thousand and thirteen, uh, to look at how we had treated different entities, including the county. Two thousand and fourteen project and two thousand and sixteen project, there was no county parcels on those projects. So that was not, uh, those weren't applicable. Two thousand and thirteen, there was, uh, but it was on a street, or it was on a stretch where we couldn't really ascertain why people were and why people weren't assessed. And county was not assessed during the two thousand and thirteen, but we couldn't ascertain the reason why without, I mean, I'm sure it's here somewhere, but we didn't dig into it. The best bet would be that was a whole new council, or a different council, this is a whole new council here. It'd be best just to hear it and, and we'll go forward from there, so.
Very good. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, uh, Brian Beeman, uh, brand-new administrator. Uh, started, uh, thirteenth of May. Uh, I got involved in the, uh, the special assessments about a week later on, uh, on the twentieth, when we got the final notice of, uh, three assessments for three of the city improvement, uh, projects that you have for two thousand and nineteen. Uh, I believe the total cost of the special assessments, if I'm not mistaken, Chad, uh, somewhere around, uh, six thousand dollars. Uh, I believe we had, uh, one on, uh, Jefferson Avenue, uh, part of West Hiawatha Drive and Tenth and Hiawatha Drive West. Am I right, Brian? Good. Uh, part of the reason I'm here tonight, uh, I did send out a, a contact to, to Chad to, to see what we needed to do, uh, in regards to the assessments. Uh, my financial director said, well, you know, we, in our history here, we've never, uh, had to pay that assessment. Short, short story, uh, I think I talked to Brian first part of July and we decided that this would be probably the best approach, would be to come to the board and, and ask the city council for a waiver, uh, for those street assessments, uh, based on all of the mutual aid and, and some of the cooperation that we've had, uh, in the past and continue to have, and I continue to hope to have, uh, especially with, uh, your earlier presentation on the, uh, AEDs. I know Jean were approached, uh, by our public health director and, uh, we didn't have the budget this year for, uh, also jumping on to kind of that bulk purchase of the AEDs. But I would ask, uh, in the future, if you're looking at doing some more, like in two thousand and twenty, uh, the county would be more than willing to jump in and, and try to be a part of that. Again, I, I had a long list of shared services that we've had from, I think there's a hydro seeder that you may have and gas pumps that we have in place that we, uh, share. And, uh, we thought, thought I would come and, and give that presentation, so, uh, just asking for a waiver.
Is this common to do in, uh, throughout Minnesota? Giving waivers to other government agencies?
There is certainly cooperation groups and that, that don't charge back and forth, yes. It's not, I wouldn't say it's new. It's just something we haven't really addressed head-on, that we could easily find.
If we waive this, then what's that do to?
Nothing. We just collect that much less in assessments. It's not a deal breaker by any means.
Don't, don't the other people have to pick up that slack? How does that work then?
Will the city fund, the city general or whatever pays it? So, yes, they have to pick it up indirectly, just not be assessed.
Not on the assessment portion.
I was part of the, um, I forget the, the exact name of tax board, uh, where people are allowed to come in and appeal their evaluations this year. And, um, I think this was the particular year where the auditor had to do a housing study and it hadn't happened in a really long time and, and some people's home values just skyrocketed. It was crazy. Um, and there was a lot of heartache in that room, um, for increases in taxes. Um, so for this in particular, it's really hard for me to waive the county's participation after seeing what everybody else is looking at for, for their taxes and, and stuff. And then the taxpayers would have to make up this difference, so that's, that's where I'm at right now.
I'm in the same place. I mean, the people that are across the street from you are going to be paying their assessments. What's fair is fair.
Any other questions or thoughts? Did you have any, I mean, speaking to this, sort of a separate issue, but maybe one that we should have in an ongoing fashion, this notion of, you know, co-op, you know, cooperating. but maybe one that we should have in an ongoing fashion, this notion of, you know, cooperation and partnership. Is there anything you want to share with us related to the sort of the financial implications for those partnerships that we should be taking into consideration?
Not at this time. I think we continue to want to do some of the mutual aid. I know, I believe we have one or two county roads already that are running through the city of Wabashaw proper. I don't know, again, where the county boards would be if we continue to maintain or if we look to turn those back over to the city. That might be a potential thought that they would have. Again, I'm having a hard time speaking for the board, having just been there for three months, so.
Well, I have to go back to some previous experience. I was the Wabashaw County engineer for 11 years. And we did Wabashaw, we did Hiawatha Drive out here, which was a state aid route. So we used all state aid money, and we didn't make assessments. That wasn't the policy at the time. But we did build some new sidewalks out here. And we did build some sidewalks across city property, and we did ask the city for a donation. And they did donate, so I'm thinking, yeah, that's probably how it kind of works, is that one agency builds a road and taxes the other agency, and then the other agency comes back and does another thing and taxes that agency back. So I would be in favor of having the county pay these fees.
That's where I'm leaning too.
Do we want to have a motion to, based on comment, to deny the request for the waiver? Does anybody have any other?
Also make their motion to deny.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Walrick, second by Councilman Sulla. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
We do want this continued discussion about partnership, obviously.
And that's, you know, this is not a decision that would be a deal breaker at any point. Again, you can't get a yes if you don't ask.
That's correct, yeah. I understand how finance directors think. They need you to ask.
That's right.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Nice to meet everyone.
Yeah.
Forward to seeing you back on other issues, thank you so much.
Anything over two weeks, you can't call yourself a newbie either, Brian.
Well, you know...
You're a veteran.
If I'm here much longer, I worry about what else they might pile.
That's a given.
Yeah, you've had an interesting couple of months.
I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
See ya.
All right, now we have before us the fire department emergency purchase of a boater moat? A boater moat, a boat motor, a motorboat? A boat motor, thank you.
Darren, come on up, I'll just kick this off briefly and how this all unfolded. The fire department was in route to that unfortunate incident on the river and got to Reed's Landing before the 2004 Mert blew up after three rebuilds. Obviously, there's a lead time in getting this going, and Darren and I worked together and looked at the, Patty pulled the purchasing policy, and we had the emergency power to get this ball rolling sooner than later, which is always good. So turn the guys loose, and they looked at different options and go from there, Darren.
Yeah, we basically did a little homework, checked with state bids a little bit, because that's what everybody seems to go off of, that's where you get the best deal for the best motor, etc. And then we checked with the county, talked with Jason Tim a little bit out there to see what they did, because the county just put a new motor on their boat this spring. And I don't know what they went with. I also checked with one of the guys at DNR office up in Lake City to see what they're running for a state bid, and we kind of all went with the same avenue that they're all running, because it seems to be very reliable, besides the state bid, which helps out quite a bit. And we have the availability to fix that motor and maintain it here at Parkside. And to me, that's huge. So we went ahead and purchased a motor and stuff through Schmitty's Marine Lake City, and they're putting it on as we speak. So we had to do some adjustments to the haul, to the council part of the boat to make the motor fit, to updating. We bought that boat from the county. And when we bought the boat from the county, the motor was blowing up at that time. And we had it refixed or rebuilt at that time, which was a third or fourth rebuild at that time. And so, but it had been running good, we've been doing, this has happened to have come up like this, and we couldn't be down, we can't have this, we've used it a lot this year. So the Labor Day coming up and everything, we need to have that availability on the water as quick as we can. So it's good that we're getting it fixed, and that's kind of where we're at, so.
Thanks for that summary, any questions for Darren?
While it's down, do we have anything to back it up?
No, we just got, we got a flat bottom, and then the county boat, of course, is available if we need to, but it's...
We're not using anybody's personal?
No. So, that's where we're at.
There is an incident, the county would be in their boat already.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So it's really the flat.
Available, and it needs to be.
Yours was much slower, by the way.
Huh?
The city's was much slower, by the way.
Yeah, it won't be now, but...
Because of the guy who's in it, Dean.
Yeah. Very true, I won't deny that. That's too much chicken from Riverboat Days. Any other questions for me?
All right, we've entertained a motion to approve the purchase and payment.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Meyer, a second from Sulla. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you, Darren. And now we have the proposed Wabashaw Conference of SCDP Rehabilitation Project. Let Buffy introduce herself, I think, she needs no introduction, but I'll just say that Chad and I were able to have a meeting with Buffy Baranik and Karen, who may also want to chime in, you're welcome to, Karen, related to an opportunity for a Small Cities Development Program Rehabilitation Project, and I'll let Buffy explain what that means.
Wonderful, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff. Thank you for having us here tonight. It's truly a pleasure to be here. I am the new, I think I can still say new, executive director for Semcha. I've been in that position now for four months. And I think mine hasn't been quite as busy as Brian's, but it's still crazy. We had an opportunity to meet with both Chad and the mayor, and Karen and I, and talk just about, a little bit about Semcha and the services that we have to offer. We're here tonight to simply talk about the Small Cities Development Program. One of my objectives in my role here in the first six months is to get out to all the key cities and the six counties that we operate in, and to actually meet with the county, meet with those cities, and let them know the services and the programs that the HRA has to offer. So we've talked a little bit about doing that offline in some of your committee meetings, so I look forward to that. I'm Karen Ducharme, who is our Administrative Development Director. She is going to talk in specifics about this program. She is truly the master grant writer for Semcha. And she can explain this program to you. I will say that partnerships are very important to Semcha. We can't do what we do without partnerships at the city and the county level. We have taken this forward as part of our budget and asked the county to match dollars from the city to go forward for this grant. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, welcome, Karen.
Thank you. So again, our purpose tonight is approval of a resolution for the city in Semcha to partner on a Small Cities Development Program for the 2020 funding cycle. First, I'm going to just review the activities of what that would entail, and then I'm going to talk about the timeline and the city's participation with this. So this program would include owner occupied, multifamily rental rehab, and commercial rehab. So for owner occupied, we improve single-family houses. The property owners have to be at 80% of the county median income and below. These are federal funds, so we have to meet a federal objective. In your packet are flyers that we use as marketing materials that provide more detail, but I'm not going to go into all the detail on each of those pages. But if you're interested in those income guidelines, those are in your packets that were provided. Eligible property owners would be eligible, could receive up to $25,000 as a 10-year deferred loan. So depending on their income level, their household size, they may have to have an owner's match, but if they stayed in the house for 10 full years, the loan's forgiven at the end of the 10th year. If they have to repay those funds at any time, those funds go into a pot of money for other rehab within the city. For rental rehab, again, we're serving tenants that are at 80% of the county median income and below, and then the market, the fair market rents that HUD sets are what we go by. So we're preserving workforce housing. And then that is a five-year deferred loan. So if the property owner maintains ownership for five years, that loan's forgiven at the end of the five years. The third activity is commercial rehab, which focuses on your downtown district and mainly the exteriors of those buildings, but also any code violations. And, for example, like you can't see the roof from the street, but preserving the overall structure as well. There's up to $40,000 that a commercial property owner could receive, and then a portion of that would get repaid into a revolving loan fund for the city. They do have to have some skin in the game, there's a 20% total project cost that they would have to leverage for that. In terms of processing and timing, so we would start with a survey once the city approves tonight, then we would do a windshield survey, so we're documenting the conditions of the buildings, matching up the need and the interest based on those two surveys, and coming back with a recommendation in early October. The preliminary proposal would be due in mid-November. From there, the state comes back with a recommendation, either competitive, marginally competitive, not competitive, or not eligible. If you get the competitive, marginally competitive, you're invited to submit a full application, and that would be due at the end of February. And then grant awards would be in May-June timeframe. So as part of this process, the city is basically the fiscal agent for it, and they always want to see leverage, that is the key word these days whenever we're going after funds. So as part of the request tonight, that we're asking the city to kind of match the county's contribution of the $10,000 for this grant, and then we also would not, that wouldn't be due if we, one, were successful, and two, it's a three-year grant, so you're not paying that upfront, you have time to budget for that. Any questions on this program? This has been a highly-used program in Wabashaw. I think they've had three to four grants, and one of those was combined with two other communities in Wabashaw County. So it's been highly-used within the city of Wabashaw.
And I believe that every time we've done this, we've reached our capacity. And are we going to be limited to a certain area then?
Very good question, yes, we are going to be limited to a targeted area. That is, they kind of reverted from that rule, and now we're back to that. So because of the population of Wabashaw is over 1,000 people, we do have a targeted area. That's the whole purpose behind the survey. Otherwise, we wouldn't need to do that survey, we would just put an ad in the paper, and we'd have people knocking down the door.
That was a frustration last time, was people wanted it, but they weren't in the area. So I'm assuming we can look back and see what area that was, and we won't overlap again.
Correct, and then it may be the same area as well. It all depends on the survey results. So if you're getting your highest level of interest and need in there, you may have, that may be the area. The survey will tell us that, though.
And so what's your control over the, or I should say, what are the criteria by which this area is determined? Sort of to Dean's point, you know?
So we need an interest, so they're estimating what their household, we have to go by household income to meet that federal objective. So as part of the survey, we're looking where the highest level of concentrated people are
Who are eligible.
To make sure that we're getting the most competitive application. But yes, we can look at previous rounds, too.
Yeah, and for anybody who's watching council's meeting from the public, you know, the flyer information is really helpful, it's outlined really clearly. So, for example, housing for households of, household of four would be eligible with an income of, combined income of $60,700. So again, households, working households can benefit from this. And I guess I wasn't clear after we visited, you know, and you first shared this with us, would the, would one program cover, I should say, one grant, cover both rental, housing, and commercial? Or would it be one of those identified through the survey?
It could be a combination of one of the three, it could be a combination. If we have commercial, we have to have a housing component, so.
Commercial only comes if housing is also there.
Right, and we have to look at the strength of the activity based on the survey response. We don't want to jeopardize funding for Wabashaw if one component is going to drag it down, so.
Any other questions?
Did you mention the county has already approved this, or is it?
They have approved it as part of the preliminary budget.
We've presented this to the county.
Okay.
I'm in front of the county in September for the preliminary budget proposal.
Okay. And so where would the $10,000 come in? That's my, what I'm most interested in.
So as grant, we would write it stating that the city has leveraged $10,000. The county's leveraged $10,000, and Semcha has also contributed leveraged dollars to that. The $10,000 could be used for specific programs, funds, it could be used for administrative support. But it would be a total combination of about $30,000 of leveraged local funds, meaning county, HRA, and the city. And we would only, we would only ask that, Semcha's got skin in the game, we're going to write the grant, we're going to go after it. We would not levy at the county or the city level if we're not successful.
Okay, so if we don't get the grant, that $10,000 just goes away?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and we wouldn't collect that $10,000 until later on, when the program's actually in place.
We can spread that out over three years if we wanted to. Can you hit a little bit or estimate on return on investment?
So...
Total grant dollars.
So total grant dollars for a combination of owner occupied and commercial, or some sort of housing with commercial, is approximately $800,000 is what typical awards are. So our most recent one in Lake City that we're administering now is about $843,000.
And that all gets used?
Otherwise, it's going back to the state, so we want to make sure it's getting...
Dean, you said people took advantage of this?
Yeah, last time I got calls left and right, especially from those that were not eligible, that didn't live in the area. But it was my understanding that it was very successful on the residential and also on the commercial.
As, you know, being interested in the facades of Main Street, you know, initially, as a new commission member, it's evident to me that a lot of those are rebuilt. And I stand corrected, if anybody corrects me on this, I'll appreciate it, but that that was Semcha, that must have been Small Cities Development. The facades that are in great shape are there because of this grant opportunity. I think it's more than meets the eye, sometimes people identify this as a really intact, historical downtown, commercial district, but really, there's been a lot of grant investment in those facades and structures.
Did you just say you've got a return on investment from the commercial and home rehab? Is that what you just said, something about $800,000?
So the total grant that we would award would be approximately $800,000 to $900,000.
It seems like you didn't mention anything about the rental rehab as far as...
So that, yep.
What do we get from that?
So the owner occupied and the rental together cannot exceed $600,000 in awarded funds. So we haven't done a lot of rental, because it's just, it's hard for that interest, or they're always doing, make sure that their buildings are maintained. So we wouldn't know what the interest or what we would be applying for until we conduct a survey.
Survey tells a story.
Yes, of need and interest. And, yeah, speak to that, how does that, what should the public expect with regards to the survey? So that it is, you know, generalizable and representative of the need? Is it mailed, it's a mailed survey?
Yes, correct, yeah.
So residents should expect, residents and tenants should expect one?
Right, so we would eliminate some of the newer areas of town and just focus more on the proper, city proper. For example, I live on Coffee Mill Drive, we're not going to qualify because of, you know, the housing structure. I live in a condo, and this is, you know, single-family, so that type of property...
So you do some...
We do some, yeah, we do...
Recruitment of the survey from the beginning, okay.
Who gets to see the results of the survey? Is that, will it be the public, public will see those results?
The city would receive total summary information, they would not see individualized results, that's been our practice.
All right. So we have before us a lot of project information. A, a commitment, you know, as, as drafted in the resolution is only upon the time of award. So it's a commitment if awarded?
Correct.
Ten thousand dollars. Would anybody like to make a motion related to the interest of council to partner with Semtra?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Councilman Moyer. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Councilman Wallerick. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Great. Thank you. Help us to be good partners with the county since they've invited it. So if we can help with informing them of the city's interest in this, we'd like that. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye.
And I should also say for the public, if you're interested, the, the, a draft of the survey is, is included in the agenda packet for anybody who's interested. Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
All right. So now we have the 2019 Holiday Decorations Expenditure Consideration. I think Tony will give us an update. And Linda, are you here? Yes, Linda's still here. I saw her earlier. I thought she'll stick around. So welcome. Look at them race to the podium.
Okay.
So some of you may or may not know her, but she's been spearheading the fundraising and decorating town in the late fall and winter months. So she has a plan for this next month of order, and what she wants to do for this winter. And basically, we have some money set aside that actually has already been donated. But I'll, she can go through the couple of projects that we got, and then I can go through the, the money side of things if you want.
Okay. So last year, what we call the swags, one light pole had the red and silver wrap on it. And then we updated the swags on the other one. Now this year, we want to get the new garland and lights to put on with the swags. And we also are going to hopefully have four twelve-foot wreaths to put on the bridge. One on each side, two for sure, hopefully four. And then we're going to have six more of the wood cutouts, cut out and painted. And Lori Stromback is in charge of all, she does all that painting, volunteers, recruits, other artists, I would call them, because they do an amazing job on those.
That's a lot of volunteer time, because the only thing that we've paid for through the fundraising is the bare plywood. So she traces them out. Our guys cut them out with a jigsaw, which is fairly easy. But then she does the, the task of painting. And I think they look, they look pretty good, so.
And yeah, we don't even pay for the paint.
And did I, I put a picture in of the old wreaths? Okay. So we used to put them up with the old ladder. And it was dangerous, but we, we did it. And then one, one got dropped about halfway down, and it was all tweaked, and it was made with rebar, old rusty steel. And so our thoughts was to spend some money on aluminum material and weld up some nice light ones. And then we'll have the new ladder truck, which is a little bit longer, so that'll be safer. And, yeah, basically-
Give me a little bit of an anxiety attack still, but I trust you that it's safe.
And, and we are allowed to do that by MNDOT. So we've done it in the past. They provided the chains actually for us and the brackets back in the day. But yeah, so she wants to get some new wraps for the, for the light poles that are not lit up, and then some new wrapping for the wreaths. And then we went ahead and got the plywood, which is not a big cost section of it. But the other high amounts due to our spending policy that needs to come through city council. And so if you look at what Linda and all of her donators have raised, it's seventeen thousand dollars in the last two years. Two thousand eighteen, you, you guys kind of gave us a bridge loan, because it had just started. And so she spent seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, or we did. So it worked out pretty good. So that's paid back, and there's money surplus to use. So with twenty nineteen, with aluminum and different things added up, I had sixty, about sixty-seven hundred bucks. And that would be taken out of the ninety-three hundred that's sitting in the account. So we'd still have leftover for next year, plus whatever comes in, so.
So if I can tell this story, because I wasn't here through a lot of this, but I, I, I know what's transpired, I think. So you, you have a community initiative around something that the city once did, but, you know, lacks resources, and including time and organizational will around, which is decorating the community. You use some outdated decorations. You were able to improve, you know, clean up and use, reuse, I should say.
Replace the light bulbs.
So you planned your work, as I understand, it's like a five, you have about a five-year plan. You know, your, as your, as your donations increase, your, you know, you can execute the plan. So now you're working the plan, and you're just, you're coming to us just to, so you're stewarding the budget of mostly donations, but we're approving that expenditure because they're donations to the city.
Yes.
At that rate, okay.
Yes, yep. And then she has things on for, let's see, this will be her two. So she has some for three, four, and five. But obviously, as the funds, you know, differ-
Right.
That plan will change.
Sure. Yep. Follow your plan according to your budget. Yeah. Okay.
The other thing that I would like to comment on is that on the reset will be on the bridge. They, they're not going to have any lights at this time. I did some research on the solar lighting, and basically, I was told to save our money, that we wouldn't be satisfied. There is no solar light bright enough now that would, we would be happy with. And they feel that that's probably two or three years out before anything would be worth the financially purchasing them. So we hope in two or three years, we'll have those wreaths lit on the bridges. But this year, they won't be lit, and probably not next year as well.
Anybody have any questions?
Great work.
I want to say I appreciate this very much. Tony, I appreciate your partnership with this group, and, you know, kind of problem-solving, and helping to figure out where the city can put in some labor, or labor, you know, the, the important labor that otherwise this, you know, Linda and pals can't necessarily get up on the lift truck. So as much as they've done quite a bit, that's probably a, we wouldn't want that. We wouldn't invite that, so thank you for making that happen.
After seeing it last year, I mean, that's growing.
Yeah.
So it's a popular.
My question is, if people do want to donate, where do they go to donate?
Well, they can bring it to City Hall, yes.
And just denote-
For holiday decorations.
Decorations, yep.
That's the only thing that it, it'll be used for.
Thanks for pointing that out. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the expenditures as outlined?
I'll move.
We have a-
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Woodley. We have a second from Wallerick. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks very much. We appreciate the plan. We keep, keeps us on track and aware of what you're going, what you're doing. Thank you. All right. And now we have our added agenda items. The first one is 137 Pembroke. This is really more of a FYI at this moment. I wish we had more to share. But this is the, the one-story building next to Passy Electric adjacent to the alley where the, that passes the common closet and the bank parking lot.
Solemn Cry Realty Building.
Solemn Cry Realty is in its most recent use, useful state. It's been deteriorating for some period of time. Just a little bit of history. In two thousand thirteen, I believe, the, the city stewarded a grant through, the HPC applied for a grant, and the city stewarded those funds to have a reuse study with the understanding that the building is significantly deteriorated. So at that time, and a little bit later, and again recently, I've looked at that, the potential for that grant, grantsmanship to occur. The first question that the State Historic Preservation Office wants to know is what's the current condition of the building? And the reality is, after last winter and this recent summer, we could, it is in tough shape. It was in tough shape when the rehabilitation report was conducted, but weather takes its toll. So this is an FYI that council's aware. I think a couple of members of council have been noticed that that's a concern. We're doing some due diligence. Chad maybe wants to speak to that. I'll continue to pursue, you know, opportunities there might be for that kind of a property. It doesn't look impossible. It just doesn't look like the timing is good. Even reconstruction of a building, a historic building, can be eligible if it adheres to the Secretary of Interior Standards, which is not impossible for a building like that. But the timing to even have a, a grant that would look at its current state would be an October deadline for a January, for January award. And by January, we could have a snow load that could make that a, no longer a standing structure, I think is fair to say. So I don't know if you want to say anything, Chad, about due diligence. It will, it will likely be on a future agenda if, if something transpires. I mean, if, if there's additional deterioration of the building, I don't want to, but that would, probably the need for a special meeting to address that. So it's, it's on everyone's radar. We just had the opportunity yesterday to have a reputable contractor take a look at it to, to sent, to give a sense of how much worse it is than it was, when it was originally carefully assessed. And his, his concern is that it is considerably more deteriorated. So that's where it stands.
Who owns that building?
Kramer.
And they, on the public record, they've, they've brought, you know, plans that they had had for that building to the HPC and notified us of their desire. That's, I'm not, I don't know the year on that, within the last few years. But they didn't make any action on those plans. They just wanted the Preservation Commission to know that they had hopes to develop that property. So, so it stands at that moment with need for more further due diligence and update to council as we learn more. Any questions or anything else people have received feedback about? They want to, I, I've notified the adjacent property owners that it's on, it's on our radar. You can see daylight now, yes?
I was just, I was contacted by numerous individuals this summer, and is there any way we could just, you know, put up plywood or something to kind of offset the look for now?
At this point, my concern is the actual stabilization of those structural walls, more so than the, the appearance. It's, it's beyond a concern of appearance to me. It's just, you know, I think the winter was very difficult, and this additional moisture. I was able to see that, that, yes, there is daylight, and that it's, it's holding water as well. So it's, it's just not in a good spot.
Something will have to be done in weeks rather than months.
Yeah.
So.
So that's we have at this time. And Craig wanted to speak about the no-wake zone and some concern about possibilities to address that.
Yeah, so I've had some concerns expressed to me by people around town that some people are not observing the no-wake zone, which extends from the Upper Marina, Parkside Marina, down to Bailey Avenue. So with those concerns, I, I asked to, to meet with the sheriff. And, and I did meet with Chief Deputy Jim Warren and Chad Springer in Chad's office, and we had a discussion on the, on the no-wake zone. And so this year is a little bit different from last year. Last year, they had floating buoys that were out there that said no-wake zone. This year, they put up signs on the shore, four of them, I believe, that said no-wake zone. So one of the problems with the zone signs that they erected is that they're hard to see.
You can't see them.
Yeah, they're-
I'm out there in the river. You cannot see the no-wake zones. People driving boats do not look at the shore for a no-wake zone. They have to be floating buoys for anyone to notice them. That's just the way it is.
So it's probably, our no-wake zone goes off in, on Labor Day, doesn't it? So it's really too late for this year. But for next year, we talked about what could be done. They talked about, there's some reluctance to put those buoys out again. I'm not sure why, but maybe somebody knows. But there's, there's also, the deputy came up with an idea of attaching the buoys to, onto the shore somehow. And that would involve some type of cable or something out there, and that, that might be a problem. Is how we're going to sink that cable and keep it weighted to the bottom. We also talked about putting no-wake zone signs on the bridge pier, the one that's out in the river, both upstream and downstream, so people can see that it's a no-wake zone. So there's a couple of issues, a couple of things that we came up with, and I just wanted to bring up to the council so that, you guys are up to date on it.
I wish I would have known that before I brought this up, because I had also met with numerous residents about the problem. And one of them had suggested, what I suggested years ago, was that we get in charge, in touch with the Corps, see if they have any old red and green buoys that can be painted white with no wakes, and see if they would be on the contract with us to take them in and out, like they'd normally do with their red and green buoys, and readjust them year by year. And years ago, I remember the Corps said no to that. But I don't, I don't really know if the city really pushed to look into that. This is-
I think that's the Coast Guard that puts out-
The Coast Guard is, takes care of the buoys. They don't have any extra ones. I know, I just asked them that recently.
There are plenty for sale.
Were, were you aware, Dean, about the reluctance to put them back?
The reluctance to put the existing ones back is that, hey, we're on a river. The fluctuation of the river has been very bad the last few years. They've been dislodged.
Tension snaps on them.
The tension snaps. There's debris floating down.
And there's also no way for the city to go out and retrieve them.
We, we only had two out last year, and that's because-
And they didn't even last the year.
We couldn't, we couldn't get to them to move them, and they stayed. The other ones drifted down past the Lower Marina. And I've tried to hire a guy from Wisconsin that-
Crane.
Crane boat. And I cannot, I've tried four times. Yep, we're going to meet up. We're going to do it. Never, just doesn't work out. So I still have two to retrieve. I have two that are stuck in oddball places that I can't get to. And the only thing I have is a flat-bottomed boat. So we're out there pulling on a three-hundred-pound weight, trying to dislodge it from a bunch of trees. In the past, we've had to cut the chain and leave it, pour a new five-gallon pail of cement. We're putting them in every year. It's just, one guy almost got caught in the chain, and certainly don't want that to happen. So that's why we're done. I mean, the Marina used to help when they had a boat, but that's, that's obsolete, too. So if we could get something permanent, you know, like a larger buoy and a weight, and mark them, that'd be great.
Yeah, and it can hurt. I, I don't think it could hurt to reach out to the Coast Guard or whoever and say, hey, if we do this, can you guys could do this?
One of my, I'm going to talk to Paul at the Corps and see if there's any help they can provide us. Well, I think there's, you know, it's one of the problems is we ask for enforcement, you know, where, where is the enforcement done? And the, the sheriff's deputy said that there just isn't enough manpower to be able to patrol that.
And there isn't.
It's, it's, it's mostly volunteers that are doing that right now. And I don't know, maybe if they issued more tickets. I don't know if they, I haven't seen too many tickets issued. I don't know if they do issue tickets for that.
But they got to patrol all the way from the Almeda up to Lake Pepin, which is quite an area. And I know the boaters have been very vocal at telling other boaters to slow down, no-wake zone, and so forth. And, but Tony, do we have anything at the harbor or at the launch pad that kind of indicate that there is a no-wake?
Ah, there's, there's a no-wake buoy by Coltman's old place.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one over by it.
Sign or something that says?
Ah, when you, when you go out of the Marina, there's a, you know, there's, there's, there's two signs there, and then there's six downriver. And, yeah, they're like four by six, but when you get out there, you know, you see this.
Red Wing does signs on the shore, but they have greater patrol.
Right.
They don't have buoys in the river.
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're not four by six. They're much smaller than that.
Sheriff ordered them there. They were four by six. Two of them were-
Must have cut them in half to save money.
And all the guys put them up. The ones we have, I think, are four by four, and the sheriff's got two four by six, I think.
I went and measured them down on the, on the bike path. Those aren't four by four, so.
They're not?
No.
They're thirty-six by, well, whatever it is, they don't see them anyways, no matter if you had them-
Yeah, and it could be the paint, but I think it's important to, to keep that, you know, if we're not going to enforce the law, then we probably shouldn't even have a law. But I think this is a law that we could have, because that is important. Because if you're standing on any of the docks, whether it's the city dock, or Slippery's Dock, or a private dock, when a boat goes by with a big wake, and some of those big cruisers leave some big wakes, you're moving around quite a bit on that dock.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's erosion of property. It's the, our parks, you know, our city park is affected. I, I think it's definitely worth fighting for. Did, I heard a, a resident, I don't know if it was a resident of, of the city, but resident of the region, who, uh, also recommended something on the bridge. Um, the visibility on the bridge would be good.
Well, it's something, just to, I think we should keep it in mind and try and come up with a solution for next year that'll work.
Yeah. We can certainly start with the Corps. We have a conversation on other, other interests of the city, um, separate from the dredge material management plan, and they're, they're amenable to, you know, pointing us to resources when they have them internally.
We could put our chief out there on paddleboard.
Be at the Alma Dam before you sneezed.
Anything further on that item?
No, not from me.
Alright, and then a discussion about these, this code update. You just want to give everybody the context.
Yeah, the code update. So, I had some questions. Um, and, uh, you know, when I see the first reading, second reading, I'm not sure, and, and, and if it's in the consent agenda, then I was, my question was, well, what are we consenting to? Is this, if we have a first reading, what does that mean? Does that mean we're leading up to a second reading and the second reading becomes law? And how can we have a first reading when these were just dropped on our desk this?
That's what the first reading is. Basically, you're getting the stuff.
And then, if, if this, that is a first, if that's all you want to run at, is that the first reading is when you, you first grab this stuff, it's really not a reading. It's sort of a, a deposit. But, uh, yeah, there isn't enough time, sometimes even on smaller documents, but certainly on this document, there isn't enough time to go through this by the next meeting. The idea to wait at least till October, I, I think you brought up, Ms. Mayor, I think that's a good idea.
No, she said wait for the second reading until October.
Mike's, Mike's advice, our city coun, or city attorney's advice was, it would be fine in his mind to still have the first reading tonight, because, to your point, it doesn't, it doesn't take effect until there's a second reading. And if, if council felt that the first reading tonight, you know, that having it on tonight's agenda was problematic, because we really wouldn't have time by September to read, that, that delaying it to the October agenda would be, would be fine. That would be one way to address the, the issue of, of, uh, volume.
I will address what's been changed. Mostly words that are either redundant or out of date. Those were changed. There was very few substantive changes to code, and if there was, it was because what our code was, was now illegal or not allowable, or we couldn't have forced it. So, there isn't a lot of substance change, and I would, I don't want this exercise from the council to be that. I would like that to be teed up from staff, working with the appropriate commissions first, and then brought back to council, because there's certainly stuff in there that I still don't think is good, and we talked about some of it in our workshop. The umpteen warnings for grass clippings, instead of just citing people and moving forward. So, that was the impetus behind getting it here for a first reading, was that the changes, and I can summarize the changes and send them out as well. It was a list, a series of, what, forty-some questions that we answered, um, to get this out there, so.
And how does our process affect the other, uh, commissions' processes in terms of timing? If we, so we won't have a first reading now until September?
No, we can have a first reading today.
Oh, we can, okay, alright, so we can.
We can even have a second reading in September.
Okay, if people feel they have sufficient time.
I mean, I, I.
So, you'll outline.
Send out the information that, that changed. In some cases, we adopted the league ordinance, if ours was out of date or antiquated in some form or another, so.
Well, it seems that when we were in the, uh, rewriting the, uh, comprehensive plan, that we had, and that was on a commission, so it wasn't with the council, but we did send it to the council for approval, that we had a, the council got it ahead of time before the, was, when the first reading came around, so there was some advance notice. So, that's.
For a substantive change like that, yes.
Yeah. I don't know, this is going to be, this is going to be the city code. This is going to be the law.
That is our code, basically, right now, 99% of it.
So, we need to outline it.
Different order and there's some small changes. That I'll forward to you.
Yeah, well, the, the city code, I thought we were hiring these people, because the city code did need some, not so much the, the substance needed changing, but a lot of the wording needed changing. It was really cumbersome.
They changed it from Assistant City Manager to Assistant City Clerk, stuff like that, is what's been changed. There's still a lot of substantive changes where we just don't feel that an old ordinance makes any sense. An example is dealing with nuisance properties, dealing with, uh, Joe's guys giving warnings every 10 days for people that don't cut their grass.
Right.
Continually do it, continually do it.
That's on ours, on us as a city and its commissions to decide about those things. A consultant won't recommend removal of ordinances.
They're not going to tell us how we should do that.
Sure, right. They've made the improvements to content where they can, but they're not going to recommend, uh, removal of content or addition of content, unless it's not legal, it sounds like. So, do we have any, uh, other questions about that or thoughts about the time you need to digest those changes? Understandably, this looks like a lot of information, but I hear you saying there's about 40 points. We'll need to, will, will we be given the ability to, uh, know where those are? Is there page references in the consultant's materials? So, so it'll be a, an exercise in.
So, my question is, is what happens if we want to change that stuff?
It'll be queued up. Don't do it now. It just wouldn't make sense to be done now.
Oh, you know, that's why I'm getting at. So, approve this, eventually look at it, fix it.
It will be queued up in the very near future, yes.
Okay, that's all I want.
Ordinance by ordinance, section by section.
Okay, that's, yep, that makes sense.
Otherwise, we'd have a million changes here.
Oh, I agree 100%.
Yeah.
Well, when we did the comprehensive plan, we did it section by section.
Yep.
Is that possible here?
That's what I, yeah. Section by section, ordinance by ordinance. We, we need to get this out there, though, first. This is not, I'll send you the changes. And then we can decide, the council, each council person can decide and have a vote on if they think it's.
Yeah, it would have been nice to have that information.
We got this Friday.
If we do a motion to approve the first reading or have the first reading, do we specify when the second reading is going to be in the motion?
Nope. You don't.
No, you just set the agenda. You don't have to. It's a function of the agenda being developed.
Okay.
But I would be interested in that feedback, if people feel that they need more than.
We can give you feedback then, okay. Well, I'll just make it have the first reading then.
I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion from, uh, Councilman Woodley, second from Councilman Walrick. Do we have any discussion? All those in.
Yeah, I just have, I just have a problem with something, calling it, I don't, I don't know, you can call it a reading, but I.
It's got to be some kind of language in.
That's what our ordinance calls, or that's what our charter calls up.
Yeah, it's just, what do you call it, semantics or?
Yeah, maybe.
So, it's upon us to read it for the first time. We will have, uh, our second reading, uh, to be determined at a later date, when those agendas are developed for September or October. Welcome feedback. If you're struggling to, you know, make sense of the changes that are going to be outlined for us. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, we, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Uh, we, motion passes and our ordinance.
First reading of the be able to remove vehicles off of nuisance properties.
Thank you. So, so this was also a city attorney's recommendation, is to move this, move this ordinance along with these ordinance changes. And so, that was in the consent agenda for that reason. Um, and so, prior to Mike's departure, he just said, it makes sense, sort of from a process standpoint, to keep that ordinance, um, with this updated code. Did I have that right? So.
And this was actually in, in response to the nuisance property.
Right, so it made it onto our agenda. It, it, the timing of it being on our agenda is related to the item that was removed, item 9-1, but it's still a valid ordinance that needs our review.
Yes.
And so, the recommendation with the city attorney is to move it along with this code change.
So, I'll make a motion to do the first reading for this one as well.
And it's already set to fit within the numbering system of the new code.
Okay, okay.
I haven't had a chance to read this, yeah.
That's in our packet, yep. Um, so, we have a motion from Councilman Woodley, second from Councilman Sulla. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, and, hope I didn't lose my pages here. We have a motion to, uh, oh, shoot, I did. Approve, does somebody have it there?
Donations.
Their hands, the donations. Would you please read the donations, Tim?
Yeah, for, uh, library, uh, Diana Fred Solberg, $2,000.
Scholberg.
What'd they say?
Scholberg.
I'm sorry, uh, Village of Nelson, uh, donated $250 to Pool Kids Swim Free Program, and the Town of Nelson donated $250 to the Pool Kids Swim Free Program.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion, do we have a motion to approve the donations?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Walrick, second from Woodley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, we had a lot to work through tonight. Thanks, everybody who's watching. Good night.
I'll move to.
We have a motion adjourned. That's how long it's been.
And a third and a fourth.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, there's something I was going to ask you.
Well, I went digital finally.
Yeah.